President Escobal, we do have Councilman White and Councilman Johnson online.
Can you hear me okay Jen?
Yep, I sure can. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the Cheyenne City Council Work Session. Today, we're going to be getting some updates on the Belvoir Master Plan. And sorry Jen, I was talking to Councilman Cook when you said who was online?
We have Councilman White and Councilman Johnson.
All right.
And Dr. Aldrich.
Okay. We'll get started. Go ahead Seth and Connor. When you're ready.
Mr. President, my name is Seth Lloyd. I'm with the City of Cheyenne Planning and Development Department. With me also is Connor White with the Planning and Development Department. We are the staff coordinating the Belvoir Ranch Master Plan update. We have a consultant firm that was working with us and that's AVIPC. Our agent is Mark Christiansen. He is here with us. He will be doing most of the presenting for us. However, as city staff, we also may be able to provide some background or answer questions as they come up. As we go through items, we encourage you to ask, ask questions whenever we get to an item that you have any concerns or questions about. And we'll do that throughout the presentation. With that, I will turn it over to Mark for the presentation on the Belvoir Ranch Master Plan update.
Go ahead, Mark.
Good afternoon, President. As Seth had mentioned, my name is Mark Christiansen. I am with AVIPC and we have been fortunate enough to work with the Planning and Development Department on this Belvoir Ranch Master Plan update. So just a little bit of an introduction. We will give a brief overview of the 2008 Master Plan. We will talk a little bit about the implementation of that 2008 Master Plan. And then get into the objectives of the 2024 Plan Update. Discuss some of the stakeholder engagement that we have completed. Discuss our public meetings to date and then get into the council priorities. Where we are currently with the Plan Update, we have been doing extensive stakeholder engagement and public engagement as well. So we're really at that point where we want to present some of those concepts back to you and really gauge what those priorities that council has for the Belvoir Ranch are. As we all know, there's a lot of interest in the ranch. There are ideas thrown out of what could be placed on the ranch, what the use of the ranch will be. So we're really trying to rein in a lot of those concepts and really create a framework by which different uses and activities can be assessed at the ranch. That's kind of the goal with this Master Plan update. And getting into the 2008 Master Plan, this is the overall development plan for the 2008 Master Plan. The Belvoir Ranch, as you all know, was purchased in 2003. And the primary impetus for the purchase was the location of a new landfill and then also the water resources that are located on the ranch as well. Shortly after that 2003 plan was, the ranch was purchased in 2003. The city worked with the Nature Conservancy to acquire the Red or the Big Hole, which is directly north of the Red Mountain Open Space in Colorado and adjacent to the Soapstone Prairie Natural Habitat area. So this big conglomerate of land came to city ownership and the planning for this started in 2007 and then the Master Plan was adopted in 2008. I think one thing to note with this Master Development Plan is the wide array of different uses that were considered at the ranch. There were many different items. We have a slide when we get into a little bit more discussion that overviews what some of those were. But primarily with the 2008 Master Plan implementation, the two noteworthy things that really did come about were it was the development of the wind turbines and the wind farm out there. So Next Era, the Next Era project brought 106 wind turbines to the ranch area, not all located on the ranch, but that project as a whole was 106 wind turbines. And that does generate some revenue for the city, as you all know. The the use was outlined in the 2008 Master Plan. However, the implementation is a little bit more extensive than was originally anticipated in the 2008 Plan. As you can see, this 2008 Plan shows the, the blue areas, which are some of those ridge lines where the wind development was anticipated. In addition to that, some more implementation is the trails that are under construction right now. There was that contract, the design build that was before the council about a month ago. That is moving forward and it's anticipated that those trails will be constructed and open to the public in the summer of 2025. In addition to these two items, many of the uses that were discussed in the 2008 Master Plan have not come to fruition through our discussions with the different stakeholders and some of the public. Some of the reasoning behind that would be the lack of funding, the ambitiousness of the plan. It did discuss the opportunity for a variety of uses and didn't really have those clear implementation steps on which ones to go for first. The overall development in 2008 was over $30 million in $2,008. So without that kind of clear direction and the ambitiousness of the plan, a lot of those things did not come to fruition. However, as you know, seeing new trail development possibilities, other new proposed uses, it really led to the planning department to look at updating the Master Plan. So with this 2024 Master Plan update, we are looking to recognize existing conditions, condense some of those 2008 Plan elements and really provide that framework for implementation. So as we have those new uses, we want to provide a framework by which to determine if they're compatible with different areas in the plan or different areas of the ranch and exactly how those can be implemented. So to do so, we have started our process with a lot of stakeholder engagement. You're not meant to necessarily read this web, but this is a mapping exercise that we completed with City of Cheyenne Planning Staff. We determined all the different vested stakeholders that might have an interest in the ranch. We looked at city departments, private entities, citizen groups and external agencies. And as you can see, there were a lot of different groups that we've considered and we have made a purposeful effort to engage a variety of these different groups so far. We still do have time as we're drafting this plan to do some more stakeholder engagement. And we would really like to do so specifically with some of the tribes that are invested in the area and that sort of thing too. So stakeholder engagement to date, we did start our stakeholder engagement about three months ago. Met with the Belvoir Ranch Steering Committee, the Ranch Manager, the Board of Public Utilities, representative that used to work for the Nature Conservancy, Brent Lathrop. He has a robust knowledge of the ranch. Public Works, the Cheyenne Running Club, City Engineers Office, Larimer County Open Space and then the City of Fort Collins Open Spaces. So with that, some of the comments that we have derived from the stakeholder groups are outlined here. The original uses considered with the purchase of the ranch are still essential and that includes the water resources and the landfill. The landfill location is still anticipated to be where it was outlined on the 2008 Master Plan. And speaking with the Board of Public Utilities and with Public Works, they, they've acknowledged that these uses are still relevant to the planning process and should be included and considered. The, the time horizon on them is still a little bit further out, but they need to be outlined in the plan to ensure that they are acknowledged in the future. And speaking with City Engineer, access remains the biggest hurdle for public uses. We know this. We know the difficulty in crossing the UP line to get to the Big Hole and get that access to Colorado. One thing that has really come to prominence is the plan should address conflicts between uses. We know that there are some more intensive uses such as the, the wind turbines and potential other uses with hunting and those sorts of things. So we need to acknowledge what these different uses are and their impacts could be. The way in which we're considering doing this thus far is looking at different character areas of the ranch and how these character areas interact with one another. We also, with our discussions with Larimer County and Fort Collins, have acknowledged that this coordination between Larimer County and the City of Fort Collins is important. This was discussed in the Mayor's Minute earlier that was released a couple of minutes before this meeting. There was a discussion on that coordination effort that we had with Larimer County. The uses that are permitted on the trails, the hours of operations, trail numbering, all those sorts of things are important when considering these. And then also speaking with them, the importance of wildlife and plant inventories are also important. That is beyond our scope. However, it is something that should be considered as we move forward with the Belvoir Ranch. In addition to the stakeholder engagement, we have had two public meetings to date. We would like to have another public meeting in July as well, prior to going forward with the Plan Draft to the governing body and the Planning Commission. So we held a public meeting on May 30th at the Larimer County Public Library on the third floor. This was an open house format in which citizens and residents were able to vote on different uses, ask questions. We had maps laid out on tables and those sorts of things. We had approximately 40 attendees sign in. I would venture to say there was probably more in the, the range of 60 to 75 attendees there. Kind of come and go format and we really got some good feedback at that event. We had our project website available for people to look into and also a survey online for people to engage with as well. And then a comment box. So we, we received a lot of comments, got a lot of good feedback from people that have been invested since the city purchased ranch and even before that. In addition to that, we did want to make an effort to meet the people where they are. We know that there is a large community out there off Harriman Road. So we worked with Renee and were able to procure getting some space at the Harriman Chapel for a public meeting. This was a little bit more, we geared it with our, our boards to overview what the existing conditions were. Kind of the city history of ownership of the ranch and we had a questionnaire with specific questions in which we were able to talk through some of their opinions and concerns with public access at the ranch. The public comments we received are listed here. This is just generally those comments we received. We, we do have the, the full log of written comments and also the comments that we've received through our online survey. The image to the right shows a, a example of the voting boards that we did have available. As you can see on this voting board, there was general interest in mountain biking, hiking, equestrian trails and those interpreted areas. And less of an interest with potential solar development, visitor center, those sorts of things. Those are kind of common with what we were seeing at that public meeting that was held on May 30th. So some of the highlights are the, is considering access for multiple uses and looking at multiple access points. There's the desire for hiking, biking, equestrian, fishing, hunting and motorized trails. So an example of some of the comments we heard is with potential equestrian trails, there was a desire to have access close to that auto road or Warren interchange location. And that was kind of due to some of the difficulties with navigating a horse trailer on some of those, those roads. With the Harriman group that we met with, I would say one of the prominent discussion points was the concerns with safety. This had to do with Harriman Road improvements. Some of the, the shoulders on that road are, you know, pretty soft and some pretty good drop offs on some of those points. And there were some concerns with some of those turns and speeding and those sorts of things. So the, the residents in the area were really concerned with cellular reception for people using the ranch and then also some ranger patrol. If there were to be some trail with the, the trailheads going to plays, how will they be controlled? How will we ensure there's not vandalism or any other sorts of dangerous activity? In general, there's a desire to continue the hunter management area. Again, there's the idea to reduce conflicts between uses and then a strong desire for a connection to the Colorado trails. So with all this, this is really led us in the direction to look at these different character approach areas, the character areas approach to planning for the ranch. However, we wanted to work with city council and hold this work session to inform you what the residents have said thus far. But then also discuss what the, the council priorities are. We envision this work session being sort of like a listening session, allowing you to share your thoughts with the ranch and expand upon some of those. I promised earlier that we would give an extensive list of the uses considered in the 2008 Master Plan. And again, this list was extensive, which may have led to the difficulty with implementation. Some of those uses that we wanted to highlight were there, there was an opportunity for a links golf course on the ranch. Truck wagon dinners, a petting zoo, a lot of different things. And it, it seems that a lot of these were outlined in the plan because they were brought up. However, we're really trying to rein in what some of these uses can be. And then if a use is not determined, providing a framework for determining that use. So I'll go ahead and stop talking now and then transfer it over to you, Mr. President, to understand what some of the council priorities are at the Belvoir.
Okay, thank you, Mark, for that. Any questions on the NICE? Any members online have any questions for Mark or Seth or Connor?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Laborne.
Well, I'm glad we got rid of the idea of the petting zoo. That really bothered me at the time and some of these other ridiculous ideas that were in that master plan. I think it's become obvious that maybe you could educate me about Next Era's position on use of the roads there that they use for their windmills. Are we conceiving of letting people use that area of the ranch?
Go ahead, Mark.
Yes, President, through you to Councilman Laborne. From my understanding, the preliminary access to the the trailhead, which I'll go back to the, the overall development plan. The, the trailhead is located closer to the, I think Seth's going to go ahead and point it out a little bit if we can, but it'll be on the west side of the property, kind of more near that rock quarry access to the Big Hole. And the current plan is to construct some of that road across that state section to connect to the wind turbine road specifically to access that trailhead. At the time, current time, I believe that we're only considering utilizing that small portion of the Next Era's roads. However, there might be more opportunities as we consider more uses to utilize more of their road infrastructure. However, I'm not quite sure what that would look like at this time and I'll let Seth expand a little bit as well.
Mr. President, Seth Lloyd is planning a development. Again, it is my understanding that Next Era has generally been a good partner and is going, is willing to you, allow us to use the roads that they have created throughout the site. Basically, just as long as we don't let people get too close to the turbines themselves. So we'll have any of the next, basically any of the next air roads that are out there, we could co-locate and use that road to access other facilities on the ranch. Any other public facilities that needed vehicle access.
And so do you have any maps of the proposed trailhead?
President, through you to Councilman Laborne. We do have those maps. They're, they're not in this presentation however, but we do have those maps available and I'd be happy to share some of those with you. They are located generally on the west side of the ranch. Currently planned about 6.5 miles with one mile being universally accessible. But we can provide you those maps. With this session, we did want to gauge what uses the council would like to see and how we'd like to move forward with those.
You see, and so do you have any information from the Engineering Department about the current effort underway to utilize the underpass under the UP Railroad? I mean, that's really the access that many people are interested in to get to the Colorado side in that trail system. What's the status of that effort?
Go ahead, Mark.
Yes, Mr. President, through you to Councilman Laborne. We, I did have that conversation with the City Engineering Department and Mr. Cobb. The difficulty at this point is the crossing via bridge would be a design that would be approved by the Union Pacific Railroad. However, that has a much steeper price tag than doing improvements to the current underpass that is located there. The improvements to the underpass are more cost effective than building a bridge. However, that is more difficult to get the Union Pacific Railroad to accept. So that's where the rub is at that point. Those conversations are still ongoing and will be acknowledged in this plan.
And do we have any idea when that might happen? As I understand it, we would be coming in off Harriman through the state section onto the windmill road, making a trailhead. So how does that? I believe that's conceived to happen prior to any agreement with the railroad, isn't it?
Yes, Mr. Laborne, that is correct. The agreement, so the location of the trailhead is strategic in the fact that it is located in a close proximity to that underpass and the, however, we're able to cross the railroad. So that will be happening. That's part of that phase one that is expected to open next summer with that 6.5 miles of trail. However, the trailhead was located in a strategic location to ensure once we do have the go-ahead to complete those improvements to get across the railroad, it's located in an area that we wouldn't need to do a new trailhead or new roads to access, to get that access. It would already be in a location that's with close proximity to the Big Hole about a mile away.
Thank you. Councilman Seigra.
Mr. Chairman, through you. Could we put up the, the uses from 2008 that were, that were shown?
Thank you. I believe that's it.
I guess what I'm, I'm interested in doing is, is trying to put a realistic plan together, maybe a five-year plan. And it seems to me that with the access off of Harriman, possibly we should focus on what we could do at the west end of the ranch. Between the bike trails, the, the things that are already discussed. But if you look at this list, in combination with that, you could do a, a, not a petting zoo. Wildlife bird viewing, you could do chuck wagon dinners if there was a group that wanted to do that. In the Mariah pasture, you could do fishing. I doubt I would ever see cabins developed, but I, I believe a campsite for particularly for people.
They need you on.
Particularly for people that want to use the biking system, Colorado and our own for a weekend type event. You know, theoretically, there could be a playground there in, I don't know about a visitor's center, but maybe. Tent camping for sure, equestrian trails possibly. So I would like to see us focus on what is accessible at this point. And I would like to, in the long-term, longer-term plan, possibly include some economic development on the east end of the ranch. There is, there are discussions going on about use of some of the eastern part of the ranch near the Swan Ranch industrial area. They're very close together. They're a couple of miles apart. So there's some synergy there. The long-term advantage in my opinion by doing that is it would bring additional access to the ranch. By doing the commercial on the east end, I think you'll see development from I-25 either through the Swan Ranch or through other access areas. So longer term, there would be additional access points, but it seems to me if we're looking at something that's achievable, I mean, there's nothing wrong with, there's nothing wrong with big vision, but something that we're really trying to achieve in the next three to five. I think we should focus on the west end and, and what could coexist together for whatever that's worth. Thank you.
Yes, President, through you. I, I would just like to add to with our update, those are the sorts of things we're definitely looking at with the what is currently, what can we currently implement? And while we do have some of those other things that are big picture and included in those would be, you know, economic development, even the landfill, some of those things that are a little bit further out. Providing a framework to acknowledge that those will are, you know, potential uses and real uses of the ranch. And providing a framework for how those might be implemented, but really focusing on those low hanging fruit type things.
Does anyone online have any questions?
Mr. Chairman, through you. I just wanted to echo what my colleague from Ward Two had said, how it's important to focus on things that we can accomplish in the short term rather than the long term. But I also appreciate you, Mark, kind of giving credence to that thought process because this project's been discussed for so many years now and it's nice to see that it finally has some energy. And that we're actually kind of in the doing stage and maybe leaving just the planning stage a little bit. I just know so many folks are interested in finally getting to, to use this land. And so the quicker they can do so, the happier I'm going to be and, and I look forward to using it as well. So thanks for all your work on it.
Okay, so it's been 21 years since the city purchased Belvoir. What was the price the city paid? Five million. Certainly considerably worth a lot more now and I don't know how many cities have ranches, but having some type of coordination between the city and the ranch. So people, you know, when we had leads here, they, they have a idea what Cheyenne is, the Old West is what they envision when they come here and being able to give them somewhat of an experience or a taste of the Old West. Seems like that would be something that the city should be taking advantage of. We have someone else with a question online.
Thank you, President Escobal. I just wanted to echo my colleagues more, one and more too. I agree that I think we need to be realistic in what we can accomplish and work and focus on those, not forgetting the the dream of what we might be able to accomplish in the future through 670 sales tax ballots or with additional funding that we might find through other means and brands. But I, I'm wondering if there's a possibility of having the, once you have accomplished, Mark, all of the, you know, gathering all this information, if you might be able to put it into kind of a timeline format of, you know, what, what we look at in year one, what could we look at in year two? That would build upon itself because I feel like right now it's pretty nebulous. We, we talk about Belvoir Ranch. I agree that people come here for that Western experience or expecting that Western experience. And we are unique in that we're probably one of the only cities that owns a working ranch. However, I also think that there's a lot of outdoor recreation available out on the Bell War Ranch that people who are wanting to not necessarily visit a legend, but want to create a legend with their activities and their recreation. Look forward to, so I'm looking forward to, once you've finished your fact gathering, perhaps seeing some sort of a timeline that's realistic that would also guide us as we're getting ready to pick together the next six mini sales tax ballot.
Thank you, Dr. Aldrich. Mark, you want to elaborate on any of that?
Yes, Mr. President, I think that's important to include in the plan, and it's definitely something that we've been thinking about with our implementation matrix, the with the character areas, we will have specific goals to achieve that we want to achieve in these different character areas that will be followed by policies by which to achieve those goals. And these policies will be coupled with implementation steps that have time horizons associated with them. And I think one thing that we'd like to hit home with this plan development process that maybe necessarily wasn't in the previous effort was revisiting the the plan every so often. You know, a lot of comprehensive planning efforts have built in updates every five years or something like that. And there there could be a framework by which we have a small update every three years and then kind of revisit the whole thing every five years or something like that. But it is, planning is an iterative process. The landscape changes, the community changes, and some of the different goals of council might change as well. So we want this to be an iterative process and something that continue and continue to be built upon. Really more of a work plan than one of those plans that sits on the shelf.
You know, what kind of feedback did you get from those meetings that you held on the hunting? How it mixes with the recreational area and wind turbines?
So we did get a little bit of feedback on that. I I think the wind turbines haven't been much of an issue with the hunter management area to this point. We discussed this specific situation with the folks down at Laramie County. Red Mountain Open Space also has hunting associated with it. And with that, they do portions of the hunter management area that are closed because of the trail activity. Or there might be sections of the trail that are closed specifically during the hunting season. With the technology that we do have available, a lot of hunting hunters use some apps to kind of determine where those boundaries might be. So those are some of the sorts of tools that they utilize. However, there's also the the posted notice, those sorts of things. And with the, it is a limited number of tags with a hunter management area. And associated with that are the strict guidelines and rules that are, you know, discussed between the city and game and fish.
Councilman Seigra. Mr. Chairman through you. And I'm not, I don't know if this question is directly related to you or if it's something for the council or both of us perhaps, but I'm curious about our long term management of the particularly the recreation, the west end of this. I mean, are we, do you recommend that that CRE manages this? Is this something we should be looking at perhaps some type of a MOU with state parks and rec? So a similar again to Kirk Gotti. I don't think most people realize that the city owns Kirk Gotti, but the parks and rec, state parks and rec manages that area. So, I mean, starting next year, we're going to have people out there, and that means there's going to have to be trash collection and trail maintenance and I presume, I hope not, but at some point, some type of law enforcement. Right now, that would be a county obligation since it's not annexed into the city. Have we, have we thought of all of these things as we start to open the ranch to the public? Is that part of what you're going to present to us? Thank you. Go ahead, Mark.
Yes, President through you, that is something that we will have some considerations in the plan about. And it was something that both City of Fort Collins and Laramie County mentioned to us as well. They do have, it it's important to note, Fort Collins owns the Soapstone Recreation Space. And that ranch is comparable in size to the Bell War Ranch. They have one ranger who makes it one trip up there a day approximately to mind these sorts of issues. But it's a 40 minute drive, so it's a consideration to have. And an MOU approach might be that sort of thing that you would look at. I know from our discussions out at the public meeting at Harriman, the volunteer fire department did have some concerns with the the safety component. That was something that was brought up several times. So it is an important consideration that we'll put into the plan, but will ultimately be a council discussion and decision.
Got some more questions from someone online?
Dr. Aldrich, did you have another question?
Thank you, Jennifer. I was just curious, President Escabel, for you. I, as you were naming off the groups, Mark, that are currently involved in this process. It has, have you had a lot of, or any participation from our new city projects manager? And what will be the role and the involvement for that person in this process?
Go ahead, Mark.
Yes, through you. So he was at our our public meeting on the 30th. We haven't had, and we we had another conversation of some potential uses on the east side of the ranch. But that will be a discussion point moving forward for sure.
Councilman Labor.
Thank you. So I know that the Atlas Missile Site there, up gradient from the sea. Unfortunately, released a lot of contamination and those plumes have spread towards town. So it's my understanding that the Army Corps of Engineers became involved in some attempt to understand the problem and possibly remediate it. What's the status of that situation?
Go ahead, Mark.
Yes, Councilman Labor. With that, I had spoken about this effort with the Board of Public Utilities. And they they do have the plume mapped, kind of the extents of it, and the remediation is ongoing. It it is a, you know, rather large plume, there was some significant contamination. So the remediation is ongoing. I'm not certain when the anticipated completion of that would be.
And what sort of remediation are you referring to?
Okay, Director.
Vicky Nemechek Public Works, I am a member of the Restoration Advisory Board and as is the Board of Public Utilities. We have been meeting for decades. And they are required to follow the circula process, which is a very long and involved process. They have tried different processes to remove and to reduce the amount of TCE in the ground and the groundwater. They have, I have reports that I could fill the whole table with. If if anybody's interested in those, I can certainly pass them on. That talks about what they're doing, what the plan is, they're getting finally to a point of having the study analysis complete and making recommendations. So but the the idea is that it will take multiple decades to move forward and and implement those issues, those processes.
Thank you. I'm also curious about the effort of the Board of Public Utilities. As my understanding is that they are currently looking at drilling some wells on the ranch. Putting a pipeline in and bringing that water over to assist in the development of the gold mine. What's the status of their effort in that regard?
Go ahead, Mark.
Yeah, so with that, that was a conversation that we had with Board of Public Utilities as well. The benefit that would be the the infrastructure, the sorts of things that would go into funding that would be funded through the the gold mine applicant. And then that water could be then put into the city system once it's taken care of. So there there's the the goal of the public, the Board of Public Utilities, and a lot of this is that a lot of the water development would be fairly expensive at the ranch. However, partnering with an organization like the the gold mine or if there's some economic development on the east end of the ranch, it really could help the board capitalize on the private funding of public infrastructure. That's the goal that they're looking towards. As far as the progress on the gold mine, I'm not aware where they are currently sitting. But that is something that we could follow up with the board.
Have they applied for well permits? Has the Board of Public Utilities applied for drilling permits on the Bell War for that purpose?
I'm not certain whether they were going to use the existing wells or drill a new well, so I can't accurately answer that question.
Thank you.
Yeah. The only other thing I was thinking was, how many cattle do we have out there now? Does anybody have any idea?
Vicky Nemechek Public Works, we have a little over 2,200 if I'm not mistaken. I have an exact number in my office if you'd like me to send it to you.
Good. Do you have any other questions from anyone else online? Hey.
Mr. Chair.
Uh, go ahead, Councilman Seigra.
Just real quick. I'm not, I'm not sure where the well development, potential well development is in relation to the public access, the trailhead, the the trails. Do you, do you see any conflict if and when that development comes?
Mr. Seigra, so with the public access, one of the things that when we were speaking about the feedback that we've received from the various stakeholders is the reduction of conflicts. With our discussion with the Board of Public Utilities, they did acknowledge some of those locations where they would like the, you know, to limit public access because there are some nice resources and on the ranch regarding the water resources that are located there. However, getting the public away from those locations was a a key initiative from the Board of Public Utilities. And that's something that we passed on to the the trail development staff.
Mr. Chair through you. So on the map, I I know where the access off a harem is, but where are the wells planned to be developed?
So many of the wells are closer to that Warren access. And then there are also some wells on the east end of the ranch as well. However, there are some portions of the on the west edge where many of those creeks and water resources go into sinks, which is where the the stream essentially disappears underground. Those are some of the areas that they would like to limit public access around. But currently where the public access is proposed to be is more is south of where the the wells are located. However, some of those trails are fairly close to the sinks, so those are some things that we're considering.
Thank you.
Hey, any final comments before we adjourn?
Just quickly through you, President, just wanted to go ahead and throw up the project schedule. So we are currently, it's hard to believe that it, two days is July. We'll have the draft plan in July and then get into that third public meeting next month. From there, we will move forward with planning commission consideration. Get back with the Bell War Ranch Steering Committee and then be in front of you again and hopefully have some some more answers to some of your great questions. And with that, I'm available for any more questions and also happy to chat individually if anybody wants to as well.
Okay, great. Any final comments or questions from anyone? Okay, seeing none, we will adjourn. Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Connor. Thank you, Seth.